Welcome to the Northborough Select Board Meeting of July 31, 2023. The time is 7:10 PM and I will call our meeting to order and I will read some opening remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This is not a regular Select Board meeting, so we don't have a public input agenda item. But if you have questions or comment on agendas as we agenda items as we go through them, please raise your virtual hand and I will be happy to recognize you. And now going around the virtual room, again, my name is Mitch Cohen in the order on I see on my screen Laura Zeiten. Elian Hirsch. Kristin Wickstead.
Yeah.
Lisa Misselli.
Yeah.
We also have with us interim Town Administrator Bob Reed.
Present.
And Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
And we also have a couple of fine folks from Northborough Cable helping to deal with the technology end of our meeting. First item on our agenda says Kristin Black Health Director, Report on the Placement of Haitian Refugees in Northborough. We did invite Kristin, but she is very, very busy dealing with, as it says on the agenda, the placement of Haitian refugees in Northborough. So we gave her the the night off from from dealing with us, but I am going to read something that she put together. And then we'll open it up to discussion. Let's see. All right. So bear with me as I read through this statement, which is about two pages long. Last week, the town was notified by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that approximately 100 new arrivals, consisting of 30 families with a total of 40 children from South America and the Caribbean, would be housed in a new temporary shelter located in town. The town has been coordinating efforts to support and provide resources to these families for an on an ongoing basis, partnering with state agencies, representatives, nonprofit, volunteer, and faith-based organizations throughout the area. The town's focus over the last week was to ensure basic food, housing, and medical needs were met. The Health Department established a target to sign up and donate and donations from the community of diapers, formula, personal care products, clothing, toys, and other items. We are very grateful to the response from the community. We we received a $1,000 donation from Wegmans, a donation of over 20 backpacks from St. Cobain, donations of diapers, food, personal care products, and $500 in laundry coins from the Northborough Food Pantry. We also received substantial financial assistance from the Worcester Community Action Council with the help of Senator Robin Kennedy. Thank you, Robin. We are also grateful to the community members who were called up and stepped up to assist with food service and other needs. We are especially grateful to locals who have stepped up to help with translation. At this time, there is no certainty to the length of length of stay. Prepared meals are being provided by a local organization with a contract with the state to support food costs. We are meeting with a service provider to discuss other eligible costs this week, and we anticipate that all food, transportation, staff, and other eligible supply costs will be covered by the state. We will be establishing a system for collecting clothing and possibly financial donations to support families. Don't have that up yet. Hopefully soon. Meetings are scheduled this week, but at this time, all basic needs are being met. An outstanding need is onsite interpreter services available throughout the day and and early evening dinnertime for Haitian Creole and Spanish speakers. If you can provide one of these services during this time, please reach out to me, me meaning not Kristin, but me being Mitch directly. You can go to the town's website, go to Select Board and click on Mitch Cohen for the link as I'm the volunteer coordinator. There has been an outpouring of support and offerings to help and provide resources from the community. This speaks volumes about how welcoming and generous Northborough is. However, because we do not know how long these arrivals will stay, understanding that they could be relocated at any time by this by state agencies, we want to be thoughtful about the tools and resources provided. In order to ensure that the resources offered address the most critical needs, we are asking that all residents seeking to provide assistance volunteering do so by through the central communications with Mitch Cohen, Chair of the Board, and volunteer coordinator. That's me. Again, go to the town website, go to Select Board and click on my name for my email address. The town will continue to provide relevant updates to the community and is currently working closely with area organizations to set up a means to donate cash and other items to the families. Once we have an established channel for donations, we will notify the public. We kindly request that residents do not show up onsite to the shelter location with donations or seeking to provide assistance. This is a safety concern and can cause confusion for staff onsite. Thank you all of you for your assistance and patience while we work out to how to how to best support the new arrivals and make them feel as welcome as possible during the stay here in Northborough. I want to add a couple of other things. I spoke with State Senator Robin Kennedy today and I guess no, this is from me, not from Kristin. She let me know that the new state budget, which is on the brink of being passed and approved by the governor, contains a new line line item, which has a million dollars for refugee housing, and there's a good chance we'll be able to take advantage of some of that for for what we're dealing with here. And I want to thank her and also Representatives Kate Donahue and Meg Kilcoyne, who have been incredibly helpful in navigating the relevant state agencies and advocating for the town's needs. There are so many incredible volunteers that have helped over the past week. I'm not even going to try to name any of them. As when we come up for air, we will find some way to thank all the volunteers that have helped those thus far and will certainly be helping going forward. With that, I'm happy to open it up to the board and see see what questions and statements anybody would like to make. Some questions people here will be able to answer, many we will not. But I know we'll be taking notes and be able to get answers to people when when the right answers are available. Member of the board, any any questions or comments, Kristin?
So the first part of that statement where you said email you Mitch Cohen.
Yes.
Repeat that.
Sure. So so in a meeting earlier today, I was asked by Kristin to be the volunteer coordinator for this incident, as it's being called. And my email address is mcohen@town.northborough with the ugh dot ma dot us. Or you could go to the town website and go underneath, I think it's Boards and Committees to Select Board. My name will be listed along all along with the other Select Board members, and you can click on my name, which will start a new email address, an email to me.
Okay, so that's just if anyone wants to volunteer for anything.
Correct.
Okay, and as far as, so I did send you and Kristin an email earlier today and Bob was CC'd. Becca, sorry, I left you off because I forgot you were coming back from vacation. But so should those people reach out to you again? Or are you considering them already on your list?
If if I'm, yeah, if somebody has already volunteered and has been onsite over the last week, most of those names I know, any others, Kristin Black will know.
People that I that I that reached out to me and then I forwarded their information to you.
I saw, I did see that. Yeah, you they don't they don't need to do that all over again. There's a second step to this, that as we're sort of formalizing the role that we should take, we want to make sure that all the volunteers that are going onsite are Corey checked. So so what what will happen is when the names come in, I will email a Corey form to them. Rebecca might email that form that will go directly to Becca. That doesn't need to go to me. She'll process the Corey paperwork and and get people validated. And I believe the Police Department will be printing out landiers or badges for for all the volunteers. We can have everyone properly identified when they go to the site.
Great. Yeah, that I think I was thinking about that. I think the Corey check is a really important step. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to add that I volunteered several times last week and attended one of the more stressful meetings where it was 2:30 in the afternoon and Northborough still didn't know how we were going to get those people dinner that night. Um, just a couple hours later. So I think I hope everybody realizes why it's been kind of, it seems chaotic because it it has been fairly chaotic, but um, I think everyone pulled everything together really well and it is, it is a really lovely group of people who seem really grateful and they seem generally pretty relieved not to be in a dangerous situation anymore, not to be in whatever other trying situations they've been in before. And some of them I noticed last night just really, really appreciated a little half hour time to themselves to just take a deep breath and kind of sit at the edge of things while we played with their children and gave their children a really good time. And I think that is a that's something that I remember now, a long time ago as a mom feeling like, oh, thank you for giving me a break. So anyway, I just wanted to add that it was really good evening yesterday.
I'll I'll add to that, that I've been there for many meetings and meals over the past week. Such a great group of people. You know, they've they've been through a lot to get here. Most, if not all of them, arrived in the United States within days prior to coming to Northborough. I don't know their specific journeys. But I suspect they had a complicated process to get here, but they're they're here and they are, they're happy, they're great, they're all young families, there are a lot of little kids who are really happy little kids and it's great to see them. We discovered on Saturday that it was the second birthday of a little girl. And a few of us came together and got in total three birthday cakes through a little comedy of errors, but it worked out fine because we needed three birthday cakes. And these are large sheet cakes and everyone everyone enjoyed singing Happy Birthday and and just having a reason to celebrate. It was, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I think one other thing that's important for people to realize too is that these people didn't necessarily know each other before and they're, they didn't necessarily travel together to get here. I think a lot of them are getting to know each other now. I don't know if people realize that. Anyway, okay.
Lisa.
Um, I too went for, I think, a lunch and a dinner. And and had spent some time with a lot of the little ones. I think Kristin told me I had two babies. That was pretty, uh, pretty well balanced until I couldn't do it anymore. These babies, but um, so I get, and I I did see Laura when I was leaving, she was coming. Is there, are we as the board members also going to go and get a Corey check? Because we've been there already. What do we do about that? Have you already taken yours too? You and you and Kristen?
So this this decision was made this morning. I haven't been to the site since. That's a good question. I guess, Becca, I assume that the board members need to be Corey checked, just like everybody else.
Yeah, I'll follow up at the board tomorrow morning with some paperwork.
Great. Thanks. Julian.
Well, thank you to all of you and and all the people out there who have been helping with this incident, right? That's what we're calling it. So what is the town responsible for, you know, the next steps, the short and long term goals? Or is there a state agency that's going to come in and help us with that?
That's a very good question. We hope a state agency or some some nonprofit will be able to take this over if this continues for a while. The state is kind of overwhelmed right now with those coming into the country in this process. We are a a right to shelter state, which means that the state has a legal obligation to provide shelter to families. A family is anyone 21, I think, under 21 and their immediate family and or anyone who is pregnant and their immediate family. So when they come into the state and they don't have a place to live, the state has a legal obligation to provide shelter. So they had that need and Northborough is not the only community that over the last couple of weeks have received an influx of new visitors. And so they sent them to the Econo Lodge and let us know they were there. And that was about the end of the state's process at the very beginning, which was a little stressful because the way we understood it, the state was taking care of them. It turns out they were not. We had a a day of some tense meetings. Kristin alluded to one of them. And but we found them food. We wanted to take good care of them. And then some more came in. So that's how we got up to the 30 families that are there now. We don't know how long they will be there. They had, the state has told us either August 5th or August 10th, depending upon who you ask. There is some talk of that being extended at least a few more weeks. We really don't know for sure because obviously they need to have another place to go if they're going to leave Northborough. So as this is a, you know, certainly, certainly, it's currently a drain on staff from doing their regular day to day work. We hope that the state will be able to to come in and probably not themselves because they don't have the personnel for it. But there are a number of nonprofit agencies that help individuals in cases like this and hopefully contract with one of them to provide the mainstay of the day to day help that they need. Getting getting food and clothing and everything like that. And certainly the town will will step in to to help any way that's necessary.
So schools, is there a possibility that some or all of the children will be enrolled in in Northborough Public Schools?
Yes. Yeah. So if if they're, if they are here, then they will have a right to go to school here. I mean, many of the little kids are are too young. You know, there are, there are, there are babies and toddlers and things like that, but school age kids. I don't know the number of school age kids off the top of my head, but that has been identified. Every family has been interviewed by Health Department staff and all of those details written down. The school is aware of the situation. You know, right now, if it's August 5th or 10th, they, you know, the school year will not have started. But if they are here until the end of August into September, then yeah. You know, they they have a right to school and and the school department will will have to figure that out. I know the Health Department is already working on making sure the kids are vaccinated and everything else to get them ready for school wherever their school might be.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments or questions from the board? Bob or Becca, anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, I don't see any hands up in the audience, but if anyone does want to ask any questions, hey, I'm starting to see a hand up. I will say before before bringing in the public, there are important and valid questions about legal status and how people got here and other political questions. There's no one at this meeting that can help with those. So if your questions or concerns are on those levels, you know, it kind of a waste of time. But but if your questions or comments are about, you know, how the town is caring for these individuals, we'd love to hear. First up, we have Fran Baxter. Fran, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Fran Baxter in 76 Cedar Hill Road. I just wanted to commend those of you who have actually been to the site already today. I had the privilege of working all day to day at a different location where there were 25 recently arrived immigrants in to the Framingham area. And now that what I was helping them with was actually the paperwork so that they could get health benefits because because the travel has been trying and some of the people are in need of more urgent, not urgent, but medical attention. And so helping them with the applications for mass health programs as well as the SNAP benefits. It is challenging because I speak mass health, but I don't speak Portuguese, Spanish, or French Creole, which is the majority of the languages that were spoken. But it is, I mean, I actually was happy to see that Northborough was one of the communities because the generosity that has been shown in the past, even when we had people at the Red Roof Inn, I think in Southborough, there was a collaborated effort. There should be legal services here at Central Mass, working with them on their immigration status as well as someone similar to what I'm doing part time in Framingham to help them with that paperwork. So I was going to reach out to Kristin, but I will certainly send you an email, Mitch, so that if there's a need for that, I'm happy to help.
Great, Fran. Thank you very much. I I know that is an identified need. And that is underway, but I, because I'm just just a volunteer, there are experts working on those things. So that might be fully underway, but I don't, I don't know the the exact status of it. Thank you, Fran.
Not not a problem. Thank you.
Next up, we have Erica Ziger. Erica, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, this is Erica Ziger to Stratton Way. Just a couple of things, and I think you may have mentioned it earlier. I stopped by today with donations and it was really nice to see. There was a lot of donations. The families seemed to be getting to know each other. There were some moms that were, you know, cleaning. They must have just had lunch. They were cleaning up the tables and they were, you know, the little kids were outside the tent. The tent was clearly visible. So when the kids played, it was, it was okay. I did have a question and you may not know, and I know you mentioned vaccines. But when they enter like an immigration facility, are they medically cleared? Like
I I don't, I might know the end of the answer to that, but not well enough to to answer the question definitively. So it's it's above the pay grade of everyone in this meeting.
Yeah, okay. And then Mitch, I'm going to send you an email because I have a large network and they may have, they may speak Haitian Creole Spanish. So um, let me check, let me, I'm going to double check with you and then I'll reach out to them. But um, in the meantime, I am happy to just, you know, if there's any donations that need to be driven there or anything like that, I'm happy to be a service and I appreciate everybody's help. Years ago, I worked a NEO operation. We had, they were Americans. We had a large number of Americans coming in from Lebanon and it was a 24 hour operation. So greatly appreciate it.
Eric. Yeah, Bob.
I think we should mention the donation part that we're working on, but I don't think people should be driving there with or without donations. I mean, I think we explained the issues here. So I think it needs to be clear that people need to be cleared before they go to the site.
Yeah, you know, during the first few days, you know, we were figuring things out as as we develop the formality of it. You know, Eric, as as I know you heard earlier, the primary means of of the public helping right now is to buy things from that registry from Target and bring them to the police station. And and then that will be brought from the police station as items are needed over to the site. And going forward, no one who isn't sort of scheduled to volunteer and already cleared to volunteer should be going to the site, but we we don't critique, we absolutely help, you know, we're very happy to everyone who has helped thus far, really.
That's very good information because I wasn't sure where to drop it off and I was like going right by there and I was like, I'm just going to do it.
Yep.
So I appreciate the info and I'll make sure that I share that with other people too, if they ask.
Great. Thank you very much, Erica.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll also add that I was asked to name a donations coordinator and Liz Nolan has has volunteered to step into that role. For those who know her, know that's a a natural fit. And so she's going to be helping with the getting the getting the materials over from the police station over to the site. And as we expand, seeking for other material donations, she'll be helping to coordinate that. I don't see any other hands up in the audience for this item. Does anyone else from the board or in the meeting, Lisa?
I just a quick question on the volunteers and the staff. Do I would imagine that that most of the staff is there during the meal times, lunch and dinner? And that, and I'm sure that there are a lot of volunteers who would, who would like to, you know, go and help and alleviate some of that because the staff's got to do their regular duties and then they've got to try to do this. So I think, and I'm assuming that's what people want. We don't want to just have the staff working Monday through Friday on those on those meals because it's really, it's a lot. I mean, it's that for
I don't know. So we're we're in pretty good shape for the basic needs Monday through Friday for lunch and dinner between staff and some already identified volunteers. This past weekend, as I suspect next weekends will be, are primarily volunteers, that the staff need a break because that's it's really hard work throughout the week. And so it'll be primarily volunteers on the weekends as the volunteers are further identified and qualified and figure out translation especially. You know, for folks that are available during the week, some may be asked to come in during the week as well. I suspect translators would be welcome just about anytime.
Okay. And then did they find some some means of transportation for the for the people to get into Worcester to get their their shots in?
That'll get figured out. I mean, the shots might be done onsite. I, you know, I don't know. That's that's up to the Health Department to to figure that out. I don't know if they would need to be transported just for that. There have been some transportation for medical needs to a couple of the area hospitals. You know, these folks had 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 a journey and and unsurprisingly have need of some medical attention. A number of them are pregnant, which is wonderful. And so they need some medical attention for that on occasion. And but but there's been a lot of discussion about transportation just for, just to get off the site. You know, this particular, you know, where this is, is right at the intersection of two busy state roads. There's not there's not a lot of beauty right there. There's not really a lot to walk to or do. So you know, hopefully in the near future, we'll identify a means of transportation and all of the other logistics that have to go along with that. So so maybe they can see some of the other great things in Northborough in in the area.
Well, Father Father Juan had come on Sunday with two or three other people from Saint Rose of Lima's church. And he was talking about getting a bus together so that maybe he could, or the Saint Rose of Lima would provide the transportation to maybe bring them up to Tugas Farm so they could go and enjoy the farm and that sort of thing. He's away this week, but I believe he's, you know, planning on putting something together when he gets back and that I gave his information to Mary Ellen. So they're they're working that out.
Yeah, yeah, there have been a number of people who've who've either offered to donate or suggested trips like that to the area. And I I don't think the site is ready for that yet, but soon. I I hope we'll be able to take advantage of that soon. Kristin?
I just wanted to add the Northborough Police Department has also been really, really great about helping. Like they obviously offered to take in the the donations and transport those. So that was nice, but they also like Chief Liver and Lieutenant Griffin came the first day that I was there and they stood there in their uniforms, you know, and they couldn't talk to these people and one of the volunteers who speaks Creole was interpreting for a big group of families and the two police officers. And he basically said, because he lives in town, and he basically said, these police officers are your friends. They are here for you. They just asked me to tell you if you need anything, you know. If if you call 911, it's these guys, it's their people who work with them. And um, so and the police have also been the ones dropping off the 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 donations. And they also offered to drive people home from the hospital if someone gets delivered to the hospital by ambulance. So like there's a very good a very good community vibe going through the police too, which I really appreciate.
As I said, all all the town staff involved have been have been amazing. As I said, all, all the town staff involved have been, have been amazing and, and reacted. Um, a week ago, you know, a week and a day ago, we, we had no idea that this was coming. And we had to become experts in this very, very quickly. And I, I say we as in everybody else but me, because I'm just a volunteer coordinator. And I conserve.
I believe Kristen did say, if I come to your meeting Monday, don't thank me. I don't want to hear it. I will leave the meeting because she's like, I'm just trying to do my job. So, yeah, they are all working really hard.
Yeah. Um, there is one item of business related to this is that because we have, um, received, as I mentioned, the thousand dollars from Wegmans, um, a substantial amount of money from an organization in Worcester. We need to, uh, have a vote to sort of accept that money. Uh, again, we're not accepting donations from the public through this yet. We may at some point in the near future. Or we may direct people to, uh, to nonprofits in the area. I, I imagine later this week, we'll put an announcement about that. But, um, I would entertain, um, a motion about accepting gifts for this.
Uh, am I muted?
You're not muted.
I am not muted. Okay, just double checking because I had covered up all zoom screen. I moved at the town accept gift funds, grant fund and, front funds and tangible property related to new arrivals being placed in the town of Northborough by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A and Section 53A and a half.
Yes.
And authorize expenditure by the Northborough Health Department of such funds and utilization and disposition of any such tangible property.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Um, and again, what this does is normally if somebody provides a gift to the town, the select board need to, needs to individually authorize each gift. This set, sets up a process that if, if money comes in or property comes in for this purpose, that's already set up. Um, and we don't need to vote on each individual item. Any other discussion on that motion? Um, all those in favor? Laura?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor. So that account is set up. Um, I can't think of anything else on this item to discuss. Bob or Becca, am I missing anything?
No, I think we're all set.
Great. All right. Um, thank you very much. And since no one has thanked Kristen, thank you, Kristen Black. Uh, yeah, I, I, yeah, I can't, I can't say enough good things, but I'll, I'll stop there. Uh, next on our agenda, we have interim town administrator duration. So, um, as we know, and we'll, uh, mention briefly again in the, um, the next agenda item. Uh, we will need interim town administrator services a little bit longer than initially forecasted. Uh, Bob has, has told us that, uh, he's willing to stay on at least a little bit longer, but, uh, but we should, we should look for something. Um, when he's, when he's done, when he wants to go do some other things. So he has suggested that, uh, as of, is it the 14th of August? That, uh, that we allow him to reduce his days in the office from three days down to two days. And he is, he is confident that, uh, that he'll still be able to continue to provide the leadership that we need. And I, I agree with him.
You'll get the same amount of work for two days instead of, uh, uh, three. I'm a great negotiator.
I was gonna let you say it. Uh, I mean, yeah, as the board knows, um, Bob has, Bob is available all the time and, uh, and has put in far more than three days of work per week. And he's, yeah, so I, I, I think this is, this is great for the town and, and fair to Bob. There are no other questions I'll entertain. Oh, sorry, Julianne?
So in case of an emergency, um, then Becca steps in or?
Well, I don't think things will change. I mean, I'll still be available. Uh, you know, you can, you know, get in touch with me, email or phone my days off. But, um, yeah, I mean, Becca's perfectly capable of handling anything that comes up.
Okay. And, and do you know, I, will that be a week by week thing that you decide what two days or?
Uh, at this point it is. I guess it depends on how the, uh, recruitment process continues.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? God, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the interim town administrator to reduce his days of work from three days per week to two days per week effective August 14th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Julianne?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bob. Uh, next up, we have town administrator search update. Um, as I think everybody knows by now, um, the candidate that we were in the process of negotiating with to take over the permanent job of town administrator, uh, withdrew from consideration the end of last week. Um, so, um, we can continue. Um, we've worked things out with MRI, the search firm that we used for the first phase to continue um, leading the search through a second phase, and we can begin that immediately, or we can, we can wait a little while. And, uh, they will not be charging us anything additional, um, other than the advertising costs, which is, um, not a lot of money. The advantage of that is they've already interviewed so many people in town, have a very thorough community profile. Um, they know the screening committee. Um, they know, they know the town. Um, and by waiting a little while, I think, you know, the, sort of the pool refreshes a little bit. And, um, so I just want to make sure everyone, everyone is okay with that. The alternative is we would have to hire another firm. You know, expend that money and, and start that process anew. But, uh, we can, we can take it either way. Any questions or comments? Kristen?
Um, I, I thought, uh, we were going to have to create a new screening committee.
We, we could.
Or we could ask those people, will you do it again?
Correct. Yeah, I, um, I've heard from a couple of the members of that screening committee, but we haven't had any, any discussions about formally reconstituting, I think. Um, yeah, the, the most important thing for us to decide is when. That if we're going to continue with MRI, we could decide to immediately advertise. Or we could say, uh, let's wait until September or so, until the end of the summer, advertise then. Um, and then we can figure out at that time exactly what we want to do about the screening committee. Um, I will say, um, it was a really good committee to work with. So at least from my perspective, I have no hesitation of working with the same group again, if they are willing, and I don't know for a fact that everyone is willing or available. Any other questions or comments? Julianne?
I think it makes perfect sense to, um, continue with MRI. Um, but I, I wonder if, um, if we can expand our advertising budget and catchment area. Is?
I think, I think it's worthwhile to ask. I, I don't remember where they advertised last time. I mean, the, um, the folks that apply for this type of job are not the type that seek ads on, on monster.com and indeed and things like that. There are a small number of industry trade journals that, uh, that towns administrator, um, pay attention to for job listings. So I, I don't know, but, um, but Bob, I think, you know, I, I, it makes sense for, for you. If you're willing to talk to them, find out where they've advertised and suggest anything additional.
Yeah, I did speak with Alan Gould today and, um, for some reason, uh, along the line, I thought I had heard that they hadn't advertised in the Mass Municipal Association, but Alan confirmed that they had. And also they seem to be pretty thorough advertising with the state associations across New England. Um, if you need a comprehensive list, I would be easy to get from Alan. But I think that they, it sounded like they were advertising, I mean, not nationwide, but, uh, certainly across New England. And they have, they have connections all over New England. They do recruiting all over New England.
I would like that list and, um, does it make sense to, to, you know, to include a part of New York State? I mean, that's.
Um, I guess I could ask Alan that question.
You know what? But that might be wrong because they might not have to, um, municipal government set up the way New England states do, right?
Well, I, I, I don't want to speak for them. I don't want to speak for Alan, but I think if they thought it was productive, they would have done it. But I can, I can double check with Alan.
Okay.
I'd like a copy of that list too, if you don't mind.
That's, it makes sense to just send it out to the whole board. And then if any individual members have suggestions on other ways of advertising, you know, send that back through Bob to MRI. And so I think I'm hearing consensus from the board about continuing with MRI. Any objections to that? Um, timing, um, again, we could, we could advertise right away. My thinking, uh, is to probably wait until the beginning of September, get us out of the summer season when maybe people are thinking more, more about jobs and less about summer vacations.
How long do we have, uh, our, our illustrious, uh, town administrator right now? Is it going to be December, October? How about December? We have a great Christmas party. I know you like to.
I'll come back for that.
So I will, I will say, so two, so two things. Um, our charter limits the duration of an, of a single interim to six months.
Right.
Um, you know, I imagine if we needed to keep an interim, and I'm not, you know, whether it be Bob or anybody else longer, we could probably figure out some way to do that. Uh, and working through council, maybe name somebody else and then bring the person back. And I don't, I don't know. I hope we don't have to go down that road too much. And the other aspect is that, uh, that MRI can and is expected to, uh, start looking for a new interim on the anticipation that, um, that Bob may want to or lead or need to, um, to, to depart from us before we have a new permanent town administrator in place.
I can, I will mention that also when I speak to MRI tomorrow. Um, how that's coming along. Um, and also interestingly enough, I was contacted by a former town manager today about interest in the interim position. So I'll, I'll forward that person's name to MRI as well.
Great.
Makes sense to, to take a little breather, especially since August, you know, families that are on vacation are getting children ready for school. So, um, maybe, you know, really getting going the beginning, the very beginning of September. Also in terms of the screening slash slash search committee. They, you know, they probably have summer plans also, and that might be easier for them. So I'm okay with waiting, waiting several weeks.
Yeah, I definitely agree with both of you on, on holding off, just, you know, for the reasons you stated already.
So are we talking about, uh, picking this back up, say, right after Labor Day?
That makes sense.
Okay.
What do you think?
I really don't know. I, uh, you know, Mitch had mentioned waiting for a while and I thought that made sense to, um, I think as Mitch put it, have the candidate pool refresh. Um, I did mention that to Alan today when I spoke with him and he talked about the merits of just going ahead now. Um, I, I don't know. I guess, I guess, uh, waiting a month is, um, and, you know, till the summer season is over. I don't think it's going to be that much of an issue.
Can you remind me again, how long do they have the posting out? Is it two weeks? Is it a month when they put that original, when MRI will put out the search? Like the job, the job posting?
I don't remember how long it was.
I don't remember vaguely. I think it was three or four weeks.
Okay.
But the vast majority of responses come in just before the deadline.
So if we are going to postpone it, my, my gut would be, let's make sure everything's lined up to get that out right on the day after Labor Day. When everybody gets back in, so maximize that time. Um, just, you know, I don't want to wait to, to reconvene in September and then cause more delays that are going to bring us into the holiday season. So whatever the timeline is going to look like, that's, you know, where my thought is. But doing any heavy work right now, I think while everybody is still on like heavy vacation mode would be challenging.
Yeah. Um, yeah, what we can do is work with MRI and develop a schedule going forward. Um, if, if folks are, folks on this board are willing to use the same screening committee. And if the members of the screening committee are willing to continue, uh, we can even start to schedule those meetings based on an expected response date. So we can have everything locked in and, um, and, and go forward. It will also be a somewhat quicker process in all likelihood. You know, we won't radically change the process, the process at the screening committee level. We had a bunch of essay questions we developed. I can't imagine we're going to change those too much. And we can, we can prepare that ahead of time if we need to.
And then if there are any changes to, like, if, if there are any changes that people would like to make on the screening committee, search committee, well, they'll that start. Is somebody going to reach out to the, to the people that had served on that committee already, just to validate or verify that they still want to participate?
Yeah, I mean, as, as the chair of that committee, I, as long, as long as the folks on the select board are okay with me doing that and want to continue to use the same screening committee. And alternative is we could re-advertise, um, figure out if we want any different structure to it. Uh, that would be some additional work and some additional time and might extend the process a little bit. Um, again, there's, there's a real advantage of having people that have been through it once before. And I can say from being in the room was a really good group.
Um, I was just thinking if, uh, any of our fellow select board members wanted to be on the screening committee this time and had, you know, said they didn't want to last time and changed their minds, they should have the opportunity to do that if they want. But they don't have to decide right this second. I just, I just thought I would throw that out there.
So we can, we can add to the screening committee. We can replace me if anybody wants to do that. Um, but we can have up to two select board members on the screening committee, because if it is three, then it becomes a quorum of the select board, which is a different animal entirely. So we don't have to decide that right now.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking of just two. Total.
Sure. And I, I have a question too on, on the way. One of the things that I felt, we have five people in an hour when it came to us. I'd like to be able to spend more time with, with some of these candidates that, um, that allow us to really get to know them a little bit better. I think that was, uh, something I would have liked to have been able to do. So now that we have a do-over, we could put something like that together. Whether they come for a day or they come, you know, that's the way you really get to learn who it is. That you're talking.
We might be able to, to talk to MRI between now and then and see, um, any other structures that they've used for sort of the interview process. Um, I think most of the time it's done the way that we were doing it. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to be done exactly that way.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right. Any other, so is everyone okay with me contacting, who's contacting the members of the screening committee and seeing if they want to continue?
Definitely.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, and again, if we want to add another one of our own or, or anything like that, we can do so anytime between now and then. We don't have to do that right now. Um, I don't think there's anything else on the town administrator search update. Okay, um, is there any other business before we go into executive session this evening? Julianne?
Yeah, uh, so we have been talking for many weeks about having a, you know, an in-person meeting where we hash out goals and things like that. And, um, we, I, with, with the summer getting, you know, people's vacations and everything. It's going to be, it's going to be tricky to schedule something, and I think we should get going on that as soon as we can. So, okay, I mean, I'd like to get, you know, what my fellow selectmen, select board people think about that and then figure out a way to, um, establish a date. I, I think we can meet before we meet with Mr. Nutting or, you know, because, because he's available now too. So how do, how are we going to work that?
Bob, any suggestions on that?
Well, I think it depends to the extent you want the, um, new town administrator involved. I know that, uh, now it's become a little longer than expected, but, um, I believe it was discussed that there was some merit to having the, um, the town administrator involved and whether you want to still have that as a, as a, um, as a goal. I mean, I did tell Jeff when I spoke with him and, and said that, uh, As a as a goal. I mean, I did tell Jeff when I spoke with him and and said that the selectman had approved. You know, the ARPA funds and using him, that it would be a few months off, and he's fine with that, that if if it was in the fall.
Well, I think I I mean, it did make perfect sense to have the the new town administrator there, but now, you know. I mean, we could hire someone who can't leave for three months and and I just feel like. We we need to really talk about goals because. Otherwise. We're. You know, we'll get more accomplished, I think, if we identify some goals that we want to get done. In the next twelve months. And with or without the the new town administrator, I think we should do it. As soon as possible.
Lisa.
I totally agree with Julianne. I think that our first meeting, we can make a list of our goals. The second meeting, we could probably have Mr. Nutting and have him. Give us the vehicles or the paths to attain those goals. And then a third time with the new town administrator, once we have refined some of that. And I think that having the goals discussed prior to offering a contract would be a good idea. Because that, there's an incorporation I've seen in in several different contracts where. Those goals are discussed prior to, so that there's a better understanding of what that job is going to entail. And what we're looking for. I think we've, I think this is a good learning experience. It shows us. The, you know, the more depth that we really have to get into. And and I think that. Meeting sooner than later, you know, if we can find out even tonight, what? What's available for anybody, and then we can, we can set that up. And then, like I said, would make three meetings. We'd have a second meeting with. Mr. Nutting that would already help us to say, okay, well, that's what you're looking to do. This is how you would do it. Not how can I help you think of what you want to do? So that's my two cents on that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can meet at any time. It may make sense to wait until the end of August, beginning of September, just due to some traveling that folks are doing, but I, because I agree that. Is a meeting that should be in person. And for folks at home, that of course would be a public meeting still.
Do we have any? I mean, I'm available for the most part. Laura, do you have any available time in August?
Um, were you thinking of like, what day of the week are you guys thinking? Or does anybody have any thoughts?
I'm I'm open. So I don't know what the rest of you have for. For plans. Nana camp is.
I mean, we could. Do, so we have, we have a meeting, sort of a regular August meeting is the fourteenth. We could do the evening of the twenty first, which. In a normal month would be a regular meeting. Be, you know, first, no, that wouldn't be, it would be seventh and. Fourteenth and twenty eighth, so twenty eighth would be the regular meeting. Either the twenty first or twenty eighth is a possibility. I prefer the twenty first.
I can do the twenty first.
You can do the twenty first. Okay.
I could do the twenty eighth. I'm sorry.
Okay, maybe we can take this offline and figure this out, but I think I think I'm hearing consensus. That we could try to set up a meeting in the near future. In advance of. Some time with Mr. Nothing to sort of preliminarily go through and develop a potential list of goals. So that we would have a starting point when we met with him.
I would love that as well, just to kind of get the feeling for what everybody, the direction that everything else is going in, and then it can help just give me some time to to think about that and how I can complement it. And how that'll benefit, you know, the the work that we're doing. I'm sorry that I didn't have more dates, you know, readily available, but.
August is tough with people. That's all right. We'll we'll figure it out. And it doesn't have to be a Monday evening. We could. You know, we could even do it, you know, Saturday afternoon or anything like that if we wanted to. But I wouldn't certainly wouldn't expect Bob or Becca to join us if we did it. It's such an odd time. Okay, but we'll we'll work on that offline about just coordinating a date. And again, for folks at home, of course, it's public discussion. That would be a publicly posted meeting, et cetera. Okay, anything else that anyone wants to talk about before we go into executive session? In which case I will entertain a motion.
I'm ready. I move we enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, Section subsection six. To discuss the land and building at thirteen Church Street. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the position of the board, and the board will not return to open session.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor, Laura.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. We are adjourning the public session at eight oh five P M. And I'll see the rest of the board in executive session. Thank you very much, everybody.
And we will not return.
We will not be returning to public session, correct?
Okay, thank you.